Come over that hill. I reliably inform that it's now five o'clock, so I will call our meeting to order. And turn it over to our city administrator.
Yeah, Jen is not here. She had an appointment that she could not make it.
Yep, she left me her.
So you have to get her.
Sure.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, and she says, "We are gearing up for the summer reading program. Program will start June 10th. It'll run for eight weeks. It's for children birth to 18 years of age. We have lots planned and are hoping for another great summer. Been spending a lot of time doing different training programs: grant writing, mental health, legal aid, and data practices are just a few. There's two programs coming up in May. First is set for Tuesday, May 14th. Will feature Ann Shreve, who has canoed the length of the Mississippi River, and will be completing a trip this summer to Hudson Bay to accomplish the goal of canoeing the entire length of North America. It'll start at 2:00 PM. That's hosted by the Friends of the Library. Also a program coming up called Barn Quilt Trails. Jay Grammon will join us Saturday, May 25th from 1:00 to 2:00, and take us on an exploration throughout the state that has barns and buildings with art decorating the site. The program is sponsored by Arrowhead Library System and is funded by the Minnesota Art and Cultural Heritage Fund." That was all she had, but I would like to add one thing with the project, all the different projects going on in the city in the next few years. Talked to both the administrator and to Jen. There's a plan afoot to display some of those conceptual artists' conceptual--
Poster boards, yeah.
--in the library.
Yeah.
And they'll also, you know, whatever is available at the time or is coming up, and they'll include like any links that are available. So people that maybe can't get to the meeting or don't have access to the internet, they can go in and take a look at what, at least a conceptualized idea of what it's going to look like, and have links or places they can go for further information. So that's coming up.
Like those QCR codes or something, like the librarians could mentor them through using that to get on to some things.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
That's it.
We'll report back to Jen. You did an admirable job of conveying the message. City Administrator?
Yeah, so the next, we've got Sarah online for engineering, she's got a presentation that I just worked forward to on communication. Sarah?
Yeah, hello, everybody. I'm Mary, members of the council. Thanks for having us. I'm gonna share my screen. At the last council meeting, you guys wanted to talk more about project communications, and so we put together some thoughts on kind of, first, we wanted to overview just generally our approach and our strategy, what we're thinking about when we're thinking about project communications. And we'll talk a little bit about some kind of longer-term strategies and shorter-term strategies that we think would be best to implement on all of these wonderful upcoming projects we have. Can you guys see that PowerPoint okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So I'm Sarah Fluberg. If you were at the open house for the West Industrial Park last month, we would have run into each other. I'm one of our planners for Bolton Bank and grew up in Walker, Minnesota, so we're out of Minnesota. And it's always a pleasure to get back up north. I spent the last six, seven years in Wilbur and Candy, Ojai County, working as a planner and economic developer down there. So fun to be back. We're gonna talk about what we're gonna talk about. So we, from a overall framework, or again, kind of our, what we're looking at when we think about project communications, we want to meet people where they are. So when we were talking about the West Industrial Park being at places like the high school and the community center, being in the community, of course, is always really important. Nowadays, in 2024, we want to meet people online as well. And so thinking about strategies like having a project website or an ongoing website for the city and for projects, sometimes that strategy includes online open houses, perhaps a little bit less necessary in this particular case, but always something that we can consider. We want to make engagement fun, so when we're with people, we want to have displays. And if we're at summer activities, we might have some activities for the kids, some kind of in-person simulation. So sometimes when we're doing transportation projects, we bring our toy cars with. Or if we're doing housing studies, we've got like little monopoly houses that we use for some activities and engagements. Getting outside is always a great opportunity, right, to see things in person. Maybe it's biking or a walking tour. Maybe it's just being outside for some engagement at a summer festival. We want to be good at listening and hearing what people have to share with us. We also want to be good at asking questions, so always inquiring about what people think and being able to collect that feedback is really important as we're documenting things. And I think the piece about engagement is always the most important at the end, is making sure that we're reporting out what has been heard. And so I know Lindsay posted the survey results of the West Industrial Park, and you guys reviewed that last month. But I think being able to share with people that not only did we listen to you while we were together, but we heard you, and here's what we heard, I think is always really well received and an important kind of end cap to that engagement process in any scale. So when we think about project communications for all of these wonderful projects you've got coming up, there's a couple different things we've been thinking about. So first is kind of longer-term strategies or long-term engagement. It was, when we were in person at the open house, one stop that had been stirring in my mind was what if we had an online website, or in this case, a project website we had for the West Industrial Park? What if we expanded that to be a clearing place or a landing place for all projects to have kind of some basic facts? You know, where did the money come from? What's the project timeline? What's the impact in the community? You know, are there streets that are going to be closed? Do we have to think about rerouting of traffic? Or what's some of that information? So having that kind of ongoing project website is something that we can really easily take that West Industrial Park website we created and expand it to include all of these projects and be able to have, again, just those basic facts that people are curious about for each project. We use a platform through Esri, which runs kind of GIS stuff called Story Maps. And Story Maps allow us to insert maps directly into that website. So these location-based projects, using a Story Map is a really great online tool for us to be able to have that easy integration and location interaction with that website. So we would propose using that format, that Story Map format, and that can link directly to the city's website that they already have. So it really just becomes an extension of the existing website that you guys have invested in and continue to upkeep. Alongside that project website, our project communications team has access to what we call GovDelivery. GovDelivery is something that the state uses, so you might be familiar with that terminology. And what GovDelivery allows us to do is to send out project updates or just updates about the city through email and/or text message. And we can build that directly into that project website, which I think is a really great additional tool and communication opportunity for the city to add on. So as projects evolve, or we have, you know, open houses coming up, in addition to being able to post them on the website and post them on social media, people can sign up for project communications through email or text message, and we can be sending out that communication we're creating as projects, again, as projects kind of go through their timeline, send those out to community members that have signed up. You can choose to turn off, keep the text messages or turn off the text message function. I think in 2024, it makes sense to just offer people the opportunity to sign up for either and choose which form of communication they would like to receive, one or both. So that's kind of thinking long term. I would envision that website and that ongoing communication through email and text as something that's going to exist for a long time as you're getting through, you know, the next several years of projects and assuming that, you know, as projects continue down the pipeline, say in five years, these systems can still exist, that website can still evolve. And those updates are really quite simple to make once we've got that initial framework created. So then it becomes a place that, you know, over time, people really learn that these are the go-to places to have that communication, just like your social media page and just like your city website. In addition to creating that project website and shifting it from being a single project website to this ongoing website, we think it would be nice to do a postcard mailing announcement throughout the community to make sure that folks have the website link and just to announce this expanded communication opportunity. You know, direct people to sign up for emails or text messages as they desire and know that they can go to this website as they have questions or are curious about ongoing projects. That postcard, you know, they could easily put, they could put it on their fridge or have it readily available at their house. But being able to share that communication in a physical format, because these ongoing engagement opportunities are digital, to have that in on paper form to start, we think, is a good approach, too. And then as projects continue, right, there's a couple of projects each year for the next several years, we know of for sure. For that project-specific communication, we want to make sure we're targeting, again, that creation of updates. And so there's several different ways that we can integrate that communication for each project. So if each one comes up, right, thinking about public open houses, that might look like, you know, if we know that there's going to be some traffic changes for the construction cycle, maybe we want to do something with just kind of upcoming project open house in the fall. So as people are thinking about their businesses, or maybe they're planning a graduation party or a wedding reception in their yard or something like that, people can be thinking ahead and have that communication ahead of time for them to be able to plan and maybe rethink plans that they might have been thinking about. We also want to have, you know, a couple of open houses closer to the project, kind of as a project kickoff as well. So thinking about strategically when and what we're sharing at those open houses for each project. And we might combine projects into one open house as well. If there's multiple going on, certainly. Making sure we're keeping that Story Map, that project website up to date as projects evolve. And then sharing those updates through the website, through social media, through articles, both in the local newspaper. And then again, sharing those media releases, those updates, those article updates through email and/or text message as people have signed up for those. We also know having, again, physical paper is another important communication form. And so just having a one-page information about each project would also be in that project-specific communication. Those could be at the library, it could be at the hall, it could be at the community center, or maybe even the hive, be it those local places, again, where people are frequenting, where they might be looking or notice that information, or they might not always be online. The other fun thing that we do, and something that really catches people's eye, especially when we're doing transportation projects, whether it's parking lots or sidewalks or streets, is we can order signage and/or sidewalk decals that, you know, really are physically located in those places where there might be traffic disruption or changes happening or upgrades happening. And so we would, we can order those things directly, again, once we have kind of that communication theme going on. Having, you can see on this example in that sidewalk decal, a QR code that people can scan. But again, something that's physically where the project is going to happen, that's going to catch people's eye as they're moving along that path is also a really, really great strategy that we've employed elsewhere, that makes it could be really fun. Something different, again, that just gets people talking, noticing, and informed about what's going to be happening. But it's not always, you know, for every project, it might not make sense, West Industrial Park, for example, right? That foot traffic isn't necessarily there. Maybe we put something on the trail, on the Masabi Trail, as things are changing with that. But for the industrial park itself, right, we focus more on that open house strategy and those online strategies to communicate information about that project. But for things like, like I said, like sidewalks, like streets, parking lots, right, when those kind of changes are happening, where we have more of that local foot traffic, bicycle traffic, that those can be really fun opportunities to share more communication and kind of have that call-out in person. So that's a pretty brief or quick overview, really. We wanted to spend some time just in dialogue. If there's changes that the council would like to see, if there's general sense of direction of things, of forms of communication you would like us to move forward with. If we're not, we don't have any dollar ask or financial ask for these things at this point, these would just be built right into the projects that are already ongoing. And Josh is here and can speak more to that if there's specific questions with that, too.
I was going to ask that question, if this communication plan is part of the fees that we're already paying or is this an add-on to, you know, add-on to the project?
Did you hear that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I'm trying to get my webcam to work here. So yeah, this would just be part of our normal way we do things. There's not a huge cost associated with doing this. And it pays dividends to do it, too. So it helps you, but it also helps us keep in touch. So it's not a huge add per se for a project, and so we can generally absorb that into our budgets.
Okay. And then the reporting piece is great, but could we get live reporting as far as, you know, on a weekly basis or something versus towards the end of the project or quarterly? To see how many clicks we're getting, or, you know, maybe one avenue is being looked at more closely than others?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we would just work with staff to coordinate with council on what their expectations are, and we can just work through city staff.
Great. I think tying all the projects into one site is a great idea.
Yeah. Related to that, what I'm, what I think we've brought up and discussed as a council, how can we be as a council transparent with the community? And I see the word project, you know, that's the world you live in. We live in, you know, a lot of events, happenings, change of personnel, functional things of the city. So I'm trying to envision how we could integrate both of those needs at once. And then, you know, other thoughts running through my mind, one, as opposed to other parts of the state, certainly been uniquely impressed that we have a lot of seniors, some of whom do not feel really comfortable on the platforms, the media world and everything. And I think we're, we've tried various ways. We just did this snapshot issue that I assume you saw. There was a newsletter that goes out periodically because we feel there are people that just want a still tactile sensation of holding something in their hands. And whether they can be trained, like you were suggesting, to become more and more frequent users of an online thing, either through the library or otherwise, that'd be something. The other thought that's coming to my mind, I sit on a number of East Range area-wide boards, each of which starts embarking on websites, not really newsletters. I think we're the only ones that are doing things like that. But I'm afraid of people tripping over each other and confusing our citizens a little bit. As significant and impactful as these projects are, if they're also looking for event information, social calendaring, what can my kids do when, you know, when I come to town and questions like that? I'm not taking anything away from what you're saying. I'm just trying to, in my own mind, wrestle with, how could we jump on the bandwagon essentially and cover both individually for Aurora but area-wise some of these communication needs? Does that ring a bell with anybody else's experiences? I don't want to get totally off on a tangent, but yeah, I don't know. I personally visited so many websites that you could just do on a rating of 1 to 10, right? I mean, a website is not a website. And some of them are a lot friendlier than others. And I think that would be an objective, as long as we've got such professional talent here, of giving us some advice on how to make the websites that we are using incredibly user-friendly. And I like the fact you were talking about updating them. That seems good. You know, the ability to do things, and the point John was making on the hits, just to try to see how effectively is the message getting out, right? It's one thing to put it out there, right? But anyway, those are just some of the restless thoughts that are running through my mind. I think it's great to be at this stage with so many, like you've said, and which Luke has impressed us with, so many projects that are impactful on the population of finding ways to ease the concerns and provide an informed basis. So I'm not taking anything away from what you're saying. I'm just wondering if it doesn't need to be somehow viewed from different lenses of how the whole communication and training of the citizens goes on.
I do think, like you mentioned, multifaceted, but other than just the website or just the public meetings, if we, the more different ways we have of getting that information out, because some people might grab this one and not care about another one.
Yeah.
So I, and then like John mentioned, is if we had some way to monitor who's using what, we can always retract some of them if nobody's paying attention to them and then focus on the ones that people are using.
A lot of people don't get that involved until it directly affects them. And then they go, "Well, this happened, and then, you know, I didn't get any notice." And then you find out all the notices, you know, all the communication. They just haven't really cared until somehow it directly affected them. And then they look to say, "Hey, I was never informed." And then you've got all these different platforms saying, "It was out there. You just chose not to take a look at it." And I think that's what John said, is how many hits are coming in? Are they actually looking at being informed?
Yeah, because 57 people responding to that survey isn't a lot to me with the population size. So how can we measure what's working, what's not working? You know, to your point, you can only lead a horse to water. You can't make a drink.
Yeah.
And if I may interject, too, that's where the community event pop-ups and stuff like that, where we'll do like a tent with some of the latest information on projects we're working on. So in my experience, it's the naysayers typically that come into open houses that go looking for information. And it can a lot of times be a minority of the overall thought, right? And so it's the vocal minority, I like to call it, versus when you do these pop-up events, you reach a completely different demographic. It's the working class, busy with their families. You catch them out at the community barbecue, and, you know, they're walking around with their kids, and they just, you catch them kind of, you can fill them in, and you can garner a lot of project support that way as well.
Plan coming up on the 30th of July.
The important thing, Mary, as you were pointing out, and throughout all of these ideas, right, is to have that consistent key messaging through all of that. So as we're creating a one-pager and a website update and a social media post, they're all going to say the same thing, so that as folks are finding those different channels, they're getting the same messages. And then you, as mayor and council, can take those key messages, whether it's a one-pager or again, pointing people to these other forms of communication, right? All of these materials can be tools that you can use as you're, you know, interacting with community members or a community member asks you a question, you can all be giving the same information to everybody consistently. And that just really helps to kind of have this holistic uplifting of the project information throughout all of those channels.
John, go ahead, Luke.
I think this is really important for us, because the biggest thing that I've been hearing is a lot of people saying that we're not transparent, we're not sharing information. We get every council meeting that I'm at, every single counselor, every single mayor, and myself always preach, we want to be transparent. So somehow there's a disconnect from what I'm hearing from the public and what we're trying to do. So this is a good way of doing it. And I think targeting things for age demographics, like at the splash pad, I think one of those sidewalk deals at the splash pad, the QR code is perfect, because those are all young families that are out there that have their phones attached to them. They can do that. But then maybe at the library, we've got the old-fashioned handouts where you got an older demographic coming in, and they can grab those pamphlets right off of there where the postcards are. Or even at the library, the website, when you pull it up, I don't know, we've talked to Jen in the library, but maybe that link when you put up the computer is the city Aurora one. However, it's accessible for, we talk to the churches, and we see if we can have some of these things at the churches where they can pick up paper copies. So just targeting demographics where they're typically hanging out at. Placemats, I used to see placemats all the time at the cafe back in the day, you know, on weekends. And maybe we can paper some placemats and put those there when people are here. So the need is there. There's a little bit of a disconnect, but I think this is absolutely perfect for what we're trying to do.
One added element, when Councillor Hess's wife was mayor for a period of time, she had a great slogan. She said, "If you feed them, they'll come." So our community's small enough that we can actually get a fairly good turnout. If we retrain them now, the pandemic kind of quelled that a little bit, but we have the facilities to do that. We have some traditions there. And I don't think Barry's quite in shape to handle the kitchen yet.
I think you have to have a mayor that cooks on like soup.
Well, we'll work on that, yeah. Okay. So yeah, just things that are unique characters in the, you know, in the community there. And yeah, it is, it is a challenge. I'm sure that everybody's wrestling with, that's for sure. So other comments to our presenters? I think this was a good teaser, kind of get plots going. Just the ones that you just spewed out, the city administrator are obviously like placemats. Yeah, it's almost a forgotten technology, but incredibly effective. The more that our dining options are driving people in the community and getting out, so yeah. Well. Go ahead. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We found in addition to placemats, if restaurants are, you know, if like a restaurant like Copper Nickel or anything like that doesn't use placemats, we've found that table tents are working really, really well in some of our like evening dining locations, too. So we can easily turn, you know, again, because using the same messaging, it's really easy to just tweak the format and create these different pieces that work in all of these different locations.
Yeah.
Well, good. I do like the idea of what they brought up about putting some of these planning boards in the library. It's looking at those, it's interesting.
Yep.
So, you know, and it may be a question box. If somebody thinks there's questions, they can ask.
There might even be something along with poster boards. Like in the Erie Mining Exhibit downstairs, there's a video that you can trigger to talk to you, essentially. And I'm sure there are lots of ways that could be both updated and created. And again, it appeals to a different, you know, instead of looking at a picture of things, you're using your audio sort of penetration options there, so yeah. Maybe we'll get, we'll crack this nut on transparency with our population, yes. It's very encouraging. Thank you, Sarah, for getting all those ideas, thoughts, and precedents out there. And yeah, and all I was trying to say was each community has a little different flavor, and we want to make sure we're sensitive to the unique qualities of our community.
Yeah, absolutely. I think even just the openness and the willingness to have an interest in having this conversation is such an important step that I think a lot of communities wrestle with and just don't even know where to start. So it's encouraging. I think you guys are on a great path, and we're really excited to continue to partner in this way and hope you do. and hope to elevate that communication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
How are we doing? I guess our time has run out on our agenda setting meeting, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Councillor McClosick, supported by Councillor Hanson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned for a minute. All right, it's past 5:30. No objection. I'll call the meeting, regular council meeting, Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, to order. And we have a roll call.
Gody?
Here.
McClosick?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
S?
Here.
Reddard?
Here.
So we have a full complement of the council, if we can stand and say, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to our prepared agenda, the agenda item number four is the consent agenda. This is the portion of the agenda which we usually consider and adopt in one motion and at one time unless councillors have any particular matters they'd like removed from that consent agenda approval. Councillors, anything anyone would not pulled out of the agenda, the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Councillor Hess has moved approval of the consent agenda.
I'll support it.
Supported by Councillor Gody. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have our consent agenda adopted. And we move into appearances. Mr. Segler, do you have words of wisdom to share with the council or questions to ask?
I just figured to listen.
All right, well, you're a good, a good student of that. We appreciate that interest there. There, there are any online city administrators?
Josh, right now, I don't know if Josh has anything that you want to talk about, if you're still with us there or?
Yeah, yeah. If you could give an update, I think, to the council quick on, on what we've been doing. We've been busy. I would have loved to have gotten an update into the package, but we, we've been busy. I guess the first piece, the West Industrial Park. So we are working with our construction manager at Risk AP. So we are going to be seeking bids here starting next week for, for the actual building in sight. And so that's just the actual structure and then the dirt work and paving and stuff around the building. So not quite the, the road going into the industrial park yet. That'll come probably in June. But we'll start the three week bidding process for, for the building site. So should be seeing some progress. One of the, the critical pieces we've been talking about for a while is the wetland donation. So with, with the rain and sunshine, we're starting to get into the growing season. So we do have that wetland donation scheduled for the week of May 13th. So once we have that, we can start locking all the pieces into place from a permitting perspective. I don't think you'll see dirt movement until probably early July, but we're going to be well underway this summer. So some exciting news there. In addition, last time we, we chatted, we, First Avenue West, we got that LRIP grant for one and a half million dollars from MINDOT. So staff and myself today had our first kickoff meeting with MINDOT. So very, very straightforward meeting. They just kind of lay out the process. We're very familiar with that process. Ultimately, the St. Louis County is the sponsor, since Aurora is now a state aid city, the county has to function as the fiscal agent. So technically they'll own the contract and then work with the city to administer it. So a process I'm very familiar with, kind of explained it today to Luke as well. Luke, I did reach out to Eric Ballstrom this afternoon too, and any additional pieces from the city, they don't have any concerns as far as including that with the project. So that's, that's the big news. Trying to think anything else. Pine Grove Park parking lot, so that is well on our radar. We've been reaching out to Misabi Batuminus to see what their schedule is going to be to get that paved. So we do have a substantial completion. I believe it's the 22nd of May. But the goal of getting that paved before, before Memorial Day, they've kind of defaulted. Well, we don't have a schedule because road postings are, are still on. I just got a notification, MINDOT released today at one o'clock, that road postings go off Monday. So they're at the top of my list to call tomorrow morning and get a, a firm schedule on when that's going to happen. So we'll notify staff as soon as we have that and get the ball in one there. So the last thing I have is our CDBG project for Central Avenue to do that crack repair. We're finalizing plans and specs. We want to get them submitted to St. Louis County for, for review and approval, which, which is typically a very straightforward process. But start soliciting quotes on that project as well. So.
Maybe it'd be an appropriate time instead of for the mayor's remarks, that you could give some, give him an update on some of the construction related elements of the East Range Water Project, which people are all, probably beginning to see evidences of.
Yeah. So we started that project as well this week, at least on the water main. So we're extending the finished water main from, from Timeville off to scenic acres. And so that work started on Monday, our contractor, USA, they made a decent amount of progress even in just three or four days here. So that should, should be going for the next two or three months to, to get that project completed. So they did mention too, they're looking at starting to install a raw water main, which will take water from the new intake on Bear's Lakes, the new water plant. That's a new 16 inch water main going along Lake Mine Road, could start as soon as the week of May 13th. So it's going to be a lot of action.
Yeah, just maybe that associated clearing of spaces next to the water tower is associated with the water project, not the West Industrial Project. And I suspect that some of our citizens are having difficulty trying to sort out what, what's the housing project by Canuti, what's the West Industrial Park, and what's the water project going on, all of them getting into the ground. And, and your firm, obviously, helping to guide a lot of those actions. So.
A big, a big piece that I was to have the trees down by April 1st to meet the, the state requirements. So, you know, there's concern with lack of action till July, it's because we had to get those trees down before nesting season for protected long-eared bat species. So.
Yeah. Tying into one of our earlier discussions there, it was interesting, part of that project was extension of lines, turned water lines to scenic acres. And the comments that were made about people's interest is perked, whatever they suddenly see it impacting their own lives, right? And things. So I think in some of these projects, your firms helping us get a little ahead of the game in terms of information getting out there.
Yeah, what a question. Both the water plant, because the old one is mandated together, and that's going to be the longest project, right, to building that water plant. So when does the water plant itself will be started?
Well, the water plants do, if I'm not mistaken, you can correct me, I think in January of 2025, it'll be going through its, it'll have reached substantial completion, right? And then they're expecting full completion during.
So we, we actually, I just talked to Brian today about it, will be started in 20, week of the 21st, right around there. But you're still with shovels in the ground. Okay. So we're going to start very soon. Our substantial completion got pushed back to 2026, like March 31st, 2026.
So later.
But that building itself, that's a big project, all the technology. About two years. We'll get her, we'll make her through. We'll get, we'll keep her going.
All, all of the water main extensions will be completed in 2024. The board has not made the decision whether scenic acres will be activated. So there's, there's a gate valve connection prior to where they're going to hook up to that private well system today. The board has not given direction on whether that system will be live now or when the water plant comes online in 2026.
So nice to hear the questions on the mind of the citizens there. So.
Another question is, people have been asking, I mean, I've been hearing about recycling. More is that going to be located?
At the last council meeting, the council voted to move it to the transfer station. So that's where we'll be for project.
But in other words, is it going to be at landfill all the time or?
Well, for the project so far, they just, they just voted to move it to the landfill for the project, the water treatment plant project. So that's what was voted.
And because it's associated with the water treatment plant site, it obviously would be an action that'd be taken for a more extended period of time than maybe the water, the raw water lines.
There's no other place there. Because I know people aren't going to complete about the hawers.
Yeah. Well, we can, we can respond to options, I'm sure, if they, if they arise.
Well, that has to be a place that's blacktopped or classified. We don't have too many choices.
Right.
Josh, I got one question for you on the industrial park. The precast bid has been let, right?
Correct, correct. That was.
Couple of weeks ago?
Bids were opened a couple of weeks ago, I think April 24th. And so Wells Concrete was the, the selected precaster.
And Josh, on that, I have a question on the crack repairs, the quotes going out. How long does that normally take? I mean, will they be able to get to that this summer if we're just putting quotes out on that project?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have too many concerns. I would envision that's, that's going to be a two to three week project for someone to come in and take care of that.
Okay. I'm just thinking contractors have their schedules built out already and, you know.
Yeah, it's a little late in the season to be bringing your firms out. All right, well, it was an interesting public appearance portion there. But moving on now to the agenda again, we have reports from staff members have largely been made during our planning and agenda setting meeting beforehand. City Administrator, any overview? You didn't get much of a chance to talk during that.
No, just take care of mine during new business and old business. And I don't know if our attorney has anything to do with it.
Not at this time?
Sort of.
All right. So we've taken care of those matters. Moving on to reports from councillors. We could just go down the row. Councillor Gody?
I'd just like to thank the community for the turnout at the volunteer dinner. That, it sounds like a broken record, but a small town wouldn't be nearly what they are without the volunteers. It just gets people together, working together to make it a better town. And thank you to the people that weren't at the dinner. There's a lot of them that I'm sure weren't. But so that's that. But, and then I'd also like to thank the people that supported the fire department, Relief Association pancake feed. They had a really good turnout. They, and they had good pancakes. It was, I took my wife, I spoiled that woman. So that's all I'm going to talk about tonight.
Would you like to add minutes?
Spoiled your wife?
Yeah, prominently.
Maybe twice.
Domestic relations there. Councillor McClosick?
Yeah, tagging on, I talked about 10 people that were at the volunteer luncheon, and they were all very positive. They thought it was an excellent event. There was no negative feedback for once on, on an event like that. So that was really well done. One other thing, the famed pickleball courts, we created a little bit of mud yesterday, but we cleaned it up pretty well. Six trees were planted there. So they're in, they won't need to be watered anytime soon because of the rain. And the open house is scheduled for January 17th. So if the general public wants to come at one o'clock, they're certainly welcome to come.
June.
May, 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 sorry, May 17th. Yeah. So we're good there.
Good. Well, the whole community, I think, is very much looking forward to this new option there. So congratulations to your team on that. So, Councillor Hanson?
I would just like to echo what's been said about the volunteers in the community. Kudos to all of them, because the amount of things that get accomplished with, through volunteer efforts is incredible. And it's.
Just to lend some perspective on that, I know the organizing team sent out invitations to 270 different members of the community. And even though not that many appeared at the dinner, it's an indication, yeah, the depth and breadth of that volunteer workforce. Anything further? Councillor Hanson, Councillor Hess?
Just got a couple of things on cemetery. Cleanup for cemetery will be the 15th of May, but an alternate of the 22nd if it's raining. So if anybody wants to bring a rake and help clean up the cemetery, we appreciate all the help. And they planted trees there yesterday. I don't, John, do you know? I mean, they planted 12?
Yeah, there were 12 trees planted. They're all about four feet tall.
What species?
White pine.
Great.
Thanks to donation from your old hawkeye.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I'll just tag on to that, you know, thanks to Huffer, Al and Paul Stark, where they're moving boards. So the truck vehicles didn't rip up the cemetery. And I think we did a pretty good job of not tearing it up, giving a white everything else.
What's the status of the new columbarium additions?
Well, it's supposed to be here this, this spring, but it sounds like it's put off till fall. Be two of them coming. We're not in a rush for them, but.
No, there's still some units available.
Okay, good. I kind of think they're tagging them with another one, because I think Tony White's got one coming too. So I would think they'd tag them together and they set them. So.
Councillor Hess? Okay. Just to follow up a little bit on the volunteer event, I think we ought to really express gratitude to the Rudy's Catering Group that was there. It was interesting, the featured speaker, Nathan Thompson from Half Day for Humanity, he and his wife both commented that they go to a lot of chicken dinners. But this one, they said, was really exceptional and real credit to the Rudy's folks for providing that kind of resource in the community there. So, let's see, we just had a CAP, a Community Action Partners meeting this noon. And what was interesting was provided a very extensive legislative update on matters that are affecting the region there. And EMS services, of course, was at the top of it. And the forecast at this moment, realizing legislatures got some challenges and things with 122 million one-time funds to enable a lot of the services that are working out there to survive financially. But then to kind of follow up on the task force they've had on the EMS mission, has a mandate through December. So they're going to be added opportunities. There may not be the local hearings, but we've really got to go to bat, I think, for the region to try and find some kind of a long-term solution there for the business plan. And then there were apparently uniquely, the environmental groups and the industrial groups have banded together to try to put in place helium development regulations and taxing mechanisms. And they're quite encouraged that they're proceeding at a rate that the helium production, if the corporation goes with it, goes along and their plans go as early as January next year. So that in light of all the other discussions that were held on, they're trying to speed up the states' regulatory things, which would help on some of our, like, if we have an industrial firm that comes into the industrial park, depending on what might be the regulatory hurdles there, legislatures really tuned into the fact that our state's regulatory processes are just kind of slow. So East Range Joint Powers Board, sitting on that, the last meeting was devoted a lot to the fact the Bowabik Catholic Church is going to be potentially redeveloped as some kind of a range folk school. That's one idea that's been floating around there, because that church will be ceasing religious activities. And they're looking for repurposing it. Bowabik's Main Street, we were told, is due to be approached mid-June, but not, and apparently wrapped up fairly quickly, so they can do the July entertainments there. They're interesting discussions. I don't know if it'll impact our industrial park, but on prefab. I don't know if it'll impact our industrial park, but on prefab housing initiatives that apparently the UMD and RRI are helping. So that might be some added wood products sort of variation for the range area there. And then we're also, East Range Joint Powers, launching its sort of impending sale short-term loan program to enable homeowners that are trying to sell their house, but they aren't up to standard, to get short-term financing to carry them to the closing, at which point that loan could be paid off. So Water Board, Josh really gave a lot of update. The read from the legislature is, you know, we have taken on a $12 million loan along with the Town of White. And the objective of several initiatives is to try to reduce the principal on that loan down to about five or six million rather than 12. And Luke's been working on efforts to get congressionally designated spending earmarks for the Corps of Engineers to potentially provide several million dollars. We were informed by our lobbyists for the city, you know, the custom firm, that the chances are very high that the city will be able to get $4.5 million more of grant money from the state's Public Facility Authority to chip away at that $6 million reduction. So we have both of those irons in the fire, and that is looking encouraging, along with the progress of the project. Obviously, we've got to be concerned both for our ratepayers and for us about the rates we'll be paying on that. And then the other thing is the value engineering. The technical committees have been really diligently trying to look to modify features without reducing the durability or quality of it, and just approach them a different way. And your group, you've been on that, Luke, and that's provided quite a relief, right? About they're looking at maybe a million and a half of shaving off.
Yeah, right now, I would say we could realistically see one to one and a half million.
So that combined with these Corps of Engineer legislative initiatives that are making me, I think, the whole Water Board feel very confident that we're going to get down to a very affordable level for the people that are customers there. Let's see. And we were encouraged, by the way, that the City of Point Lakes sent a representative to the last Water Board meeting, realizing that they're in the midst of a capital improvement plan review and everything. We thought that was a nice ambassadorial effort, and we're going to try to encourage that, to keep them up to date on how that project's evolving, because that would be nice to begin to realize that vision of a cross-range project. So then just to call people's attention, we actually did get the snapshot edition out. It was distributed by the U.S. Postal Service this time. And it was amazing to me, we each one of those items was only 20 cents to deliver to every door. So of course, there was production cost there, but that takes away from the people who are saying we aren't communicating with them. It might be something, you know, did you get some little green four-page pamphlet in your mail? That was one of our attempts anyway to be as transparent. So that's the mayor's report. And let's see. I think then moving on to Agenda Item 16, the old business, we have the City Engineering Services Agreement. City Administrator, where do we stand on? That's been on the agenda a few times.
Well, I met Mike since he should have talked about it a little bit.
From the beginning, they always say that you don't want to limit liability, and you don't want to block the right to go into court, maybe. So over modifications, corrections and deletion, I think it's good to go now on a higher expectation is that the mayor and council will support it and support it this evening.
That's reassuring that you've had an opportunity to go through it and respect that input there. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Engineering Services Agreement.
Councilor Hess is moved. I'll support it, supported by Councilor Hanson. Any further discussion on elements of the plan? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. We have our City Engineering Agreement. Moving on to Agenda Item 17, New Business. 17.1, excuse me, is the approval of two new board members, which I think brings the Library Board up the fold. Compliment.
It would be both excellent candidates. I would move that move that we would approve both of them.
I'll support that.
Councilor Hanson moved. Councilor McClosage supported. Any further discussion or background information on that? A kudos to the board for recruiting.
We should name.
Yeah, I guess the two candidates that are being moved to approve for the Library Board is Angie Larson and Lori Johnson. Each of them would serve a term that ends at the end of this year, but past experience has been once they get on the board, they just love it, so they stay with it, right? If there is no further discussion, then we have a motion and support on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye. We have two new board members. Moving on to Agenda Item 17.2, is the action of approving one new Planning and Zoning Commissioner, as a member, Mark Obak, who I believe has been on there before, hasn't he? He's coming back.
I don't know if he was on there. He was on the HRE board before.
Yeah, I remember a cut, your early times, I think that he was there, but I might be mistaken.
No, I was there for years, and he was never on there.
All right.
He was on the other one.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Mark Obak?
I'll make a motion to approve Mark.
Moved by Councilor Hess.
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor Godey. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And I assume that gets us up to full complement on Planning and Zoning also?
I think so.
Okay. Speaking of the followers, they're coming forward. 17.3, there's an item to accept the community center custodian's resignation. City Administrator, any background on that?
Yep, our custodian has hung up his mop for the last time, I guess I should say. So I'm just really thankful for all the work he's done. He's been here since I've been here in beforehand. So we're looking to accept his resignation. And then we would like to post internally the motions. We have an internal posting of May 3rd through May 9th for five days. And then an external posting running in parallel with it from the 3rd to 17th.
Could we all do those both in one one motion, probably?
I think it's clear to accept the resignation and do the.
Do this. All right, so is there a motion to accept the resignation? Go ahead. Moved by Councilor McClosage, supported by Councilor Hanson. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. The resignation's accepted, and then be appropriate to have a motion then to undertake the replacement actions that the city administrator just described? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to oppose for job opening for.
Internal.
Through the 9th for the internal and then external through the 17th at noon.
That'll work.
All right.
I'll support it.
Councilor Hess made the motion, supported by Councilor Godey. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And that passes unanimously. 17.4 is the adoption of updated cemetery guidelines.
Should be community center.
We're going to have to take no action on that, because it was for the community center. So that wasn't just kidding.
So we do have in our packet, and therefore publicly available, the proposed alternative community center rules and regulations. So I think it'd be still appropriate, even though it was on the agenda listed differently, to proceed.
Well, I think it should be, if you can let and act on it, you know, under the community center.
It's not something that.
No, it's not urgent.
Yeah, you can discuss discuss it, you know, take no action on it.
Okay.
I would make a motion, we table it.
Well, I have one thing I wanted to bring up. On the security deposit of $100, I don't know what the council thinks, but I'm wondering, you know, with the cost of things, if something does go awry in there, if we should up that deposit from $100 to something other. They'd get it back, obviously, if the community center is clean and things aren't broken and that sort of thing. So I don't know what others' opinion are on that, but it just seems kind of low to me.
Well, if we're going to table it, maybe we can get some comments from, I think, a deputy clerk in particular kind of monitors the use there to see if $100 is maybe appropriate. But I think, what, we did get a motion to table? That we made a motion. Councilor Hess and supported by Councilor Hanson. We will charge the deputy clerk with responding to that, I guess. All right. Any further discussion on the motion to table? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. That matters to table. Let's see. 17.5, accepting the animal control officer's resignation. I hope this isn't some kind of an epidemic here, but.
No, two unrelated things. So we're just looking for a motion to accept the resignation of our animal control officer. And we'll go through the posting in a few seconds. We'll address that the next.
All right.
Make a motion to accept the resignation.
Moved by Councilor Hess, supported by.
I'll support it.
It's a Councilor Hanson. This is to accept resignation, seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. All right, so the resignation, and what's the planned city administrator posting?
Yeah, we would just run the same ad, same posting internally from May 3rd through the 9th, and then externally the 3rd through the 17th.
I'll make that motion to post.
All right. Moved by Councilor Hess, support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Councilor McClosage. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. So we'll take care of that matter. Now, we're going to turn the table here a little bit, going on to 17.6. We're hiring temporary summer laborers. So, City Administrator, do you want to kind of relate to the record, the plan there?
So the plan this year is to have four full-time summer laborers. They will work the public works garage Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 3:30 with the same regular staff. So they'll be there five days a week. And then we also will have one lead summer laborer pool hire in the next motion. And we'll kind of supervise that. So this first one would be to make a motion to hire Landon Luke, Greta Levelwind, Dakota Cruz, and East Nsarr as the temporary summer laborers, myself, Chief Suler, and Public Works Supervisor Sullivan sat on the committee and went through the applications. They got the background check.
Good. Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to hire those that were named.
Motion by Councilor Godey to hire the named individuals and support. Supported by Councilor Hanson. Was there sufficient interest in, just out of curiosity?
Was there what?
Interest?
Yes, yeah, we had plenty of applications.
Plenty of applications. Encouraging. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed. So we have our summer labor force together. Moving on to 17.8, City Hall closure for safety trains. Did I miss?
Lead labor.
Lead.
Oh, the lead. I'm sorry, yes. All right, so 17.7, the same topic of summer labor is the lead summer laborer. Your recommendation on that is?
Hire Matt Christiansen for this position. Same schedule, Monday through Friday, 7:00 to 3:30, Public Works Crew. Yes, same energy.
Okay. I'll make the motion to hire Matt Christiansen.
Move to approve the nomination by Councilor Hess, support. Support, Councilor Hanson supports. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, we have our lead summer thing. Now, moving on to 17.8, City Hall closure for safety trains. City Administrator, do you want to just give a little background on why that would be necessary?
Yep, so all staff is required to attend this. These are our annual OSHA trainings that are required by law to do every year. So we completely close City Hall today. And this is for City Hall staff. This is the public works staff, this is the summer staff. This is due June 3rd.
All right, so for the public that's watching, make note, the City Hall will be closed, what, all day, right?
Yeah. We will post it as well.
On June 3rd. All right, is there a motion to approve the closure of the offices on June 3rd?
I'm hoping we approve the closure.
Moved by Councilor Hanson, supported by Councilor Godey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. That's unanimous. Moving on to Agenda Item 17.9, Celebrator Ruhr requests relative to the July 3rd and surrounding days events. This is quite a detailed plan, so I suspect it reflects that you've been working with the Celebrator Ruhr group.
And that Public Works Supervisor specifically has been working with it and has given the thumbs up for this. So what we're trying to get with them is that there's just minor tweaks here, they're not a whole plan change. And this is exactly that. There's no look through really anything to change from this year. One big thing is they're looking to kind of close down the bank parking lot on the 3rd for some events at the beginning. But other than that, it's all no problem to us.
Good. It's nice to see the coordination there. It's an event that we've learned a lot from previous years and everything. Is there a motion to approve the requested coordination of activities between the Celebrator Ruhr group and the city organizations?
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Councilor Hess, supported by Councilor McClosage. Any further discussion or questions, clarifications?
The only question I had is on that Ninja thing, and we might not have the details. They say they're going to place it on the parking lot, but they're not going to be driving anything into the parking lot, are they?
No. In the past, people have pulled the nail and things into the parking lot. We're not going to allow that.
All this Ninja energy there, that's right there. Concerns there.
Well, I thought just like some of their apparatus might need to be secured to the ground somehow, you know? That's what I was asking.
Well, we'll.
I don't know, I've never done it.
I know. Standing by eagerly anticipating what constitutes that event. So again, we have a motion and support on the table, seeing no further questions. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Taking care of that and set the stage for July 3rd. 1710, Youth Activities Coordinator Contract. City Administrator, we've got a highlighted version, I think, that shows some of the changes in the existing contract, right?
Yeah, so this is a change of about $500 each year approximately. It was read through the Hart Committee, the Hart Committee did approve it. So they give their blessing. And we did also assign Councilor McClosage to sit on this, I had a resignation, a previous councilor left that spot. So we sat him in there as well. So we're just looking for the approval of this. This will carry us through 24 and through 25.
So our supervision essentially in the contract and the performance that Councilor McClosage will be sitting in, that was like monthly meetings or?
They're supposed to be semi-annually or as needed. So there was one in the spring, which we sort of tell them for, but there will be another one in the fall. We can look for updates from Mr. Ger, any kind of council like, he can come and speak. And again, just to, I mean, for the public and everybody else, this is a combination with Town of White, City of Point Lakes, City of Bywabik, and us all contributing people share for a little type of issue at the school. And according to, you know, the last update that he gave, this is running all of the programs for ball, softball, basketball, softball.
And the senior exercise center.
Well, and to tag on to that, I looked up some of the numbers. We've got about 336 children that are 17 years or younger that would fall under his auspices. And Point Lakes has 466 in that age range, and Bywabik has 98. So I didn't do the Town of White.
Quite a pool.
But, yeah. And, you know, we took a look at this and with just getting referees, umpires, all that stuff coordinated, that's all part of his job. So we think it's well worth it to continue on in this relationship for this time.
It's good to see that it's being successful, you know? When it was originally considered and adopted, there was a real sense that there was a need out there to have central coordination on all those activities. So let's see. I think it's in order to entertain a motion to approve the amended. So, let's see, I think it's in order, entertain a motion to approve the amended contract.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Counselor McClosage.
I'll support it.
Supported by Counselor Hanson. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we have a new, and that's a two-year contract, isn't it? Yeah. Okay. Agenda Item 17.11, Designated Storage Room for Library Use. City Administrator, do you want to explain that a little bit?
Yes, we've got a storage room up here, that the library will be used for a prom dress exchange program, which basically those who bring dresses are tuned to clothing dresses, and those who not have funds to spend on expensive dresses could come in and check it out through the library. The library will run this program, and they'll just be stored up there, so.
So will the room be utilized all year, or just during time?
I'm guessing it'll be used all year.
Oh, yeah. And just for orientation purposes, what, it's one of the rooms that's off of the lunchroom?
Yes, off the break room.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I mean, anybody can use it from rural bywabeks.
Yep, to the school.
Now, this was at the school, as I understand, they just ran out of time and space. Talked to the librarian here, apparently the Gilbert Library has a similar program that's working really well, has worked well.
Expensive dresses.
Yeah, the guys get off pretty lightly, dress wear otherwise. So is there a motion to approve that use?
I move we approve it.
Moved by Counselor Hanson. Is there a support?
I'll support that.
Supported by Counselor McClosage. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passed unanimously. 17.12 is adopting proposed Resolution 2024-31, anti-nepotism policy, which for the viewing audience might have to be explored a little bit, City Administrator.
Yeah, so this doesn't, this would not keep a family member from working in the city together, it would just keep one from being directly supervised, you know, one with a direct, direct supervision of them. So they could potentially work in different departments, maybe one at water, one at waste water plant, and one at City Hall, if you're looking at public works. What this is keeping is some of the, being the public works supervisor, supervising their family member, brother, child, who's in there working full-time. What we're doing here, East Range can adopt this policy, City of Point Lakes can be adopting this policy, we'd rather do it now than get into trouble.
So it's kind of been an oversight, right? Because a lot of cities already have similar policies in place in the region, right?
Yep, and this has been reviewed by our attorney.
And it pertains to summer temps, for example, as well as regular full-time employees?
Correct, yep.
Good, well, it's nice to be adopting something like that in advance of a problem developing, so city policies occasionally have a good place in wisdom there, so. I'll make a motion by Counselor Hess to adopt. Is there a support?
I'll support it.
Supported by Counselor Godey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. It's 17.13, other, any?
I do have another, nothing that needs voting on today, but something that I'd like to, take a little brain on. We do need to come up with some street names. Industrial Park, there's two streets that are up there, and there's also going to be a street and a housing apartment. So, so we come up with those names, whether you want to do something fun for the community, or you want to just, you know, are we looking for names, objects? Do we just want to have something simple like we have with Third Avenue? Industrial Drive is already taken.
I'm thinking for community engagement, that sounds like a really attractive opening up for a period tonight.
I'd like to see a little contest.
Yeah.
You know, decide where they're going to be, how many of them. Have a little contest, maybe Industrial Park will be separate, and Housing will be separate.
And the housing isn't quite ready to go yet, so maybe this one, we would just do the two streets, we could do it for a couple of weeks, put it on there, and then get some names, and then we could just have the community go with which ones they want to see, something like that.
Kind of a, maybe the July 3, we could.
Well, I think they need a way.
No, we need.
Yeah, because when they start building, Michelle and the girl, they need to have stuff delivered, you know, they got an address. And it takes us time to go through the county and get the wire numbers and all that other stuff, too, so it's going to have to be done promptly, really quick, and I think Josh and I.
This is something we could probably work with Sarah on.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So if you guys are okay directing staff to do the, I guess it would be a survey or a contest, or whatever.
Contest, yeah. Yeah, I think the contest is.
Yeah. But I think we should work with her. She's probably have ideas about it.
As long as Josh has a timer, when it's got to be done by, and then we'll just drive the contest to get it done.
Something like that, by council direction, then, just.
Okay, are you okay doing that under other?
Under.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we have a contest to select names for two streets in the Industrial Park.
Is there a support? I'll support, supported by Counselor Hanson, moved by Counselor Hess. Interesting opportunity for community engagement. All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and any other?
I've got two others. One is.
The chair recognizes Mr. Seigler.
What is the next meeting for the, uh, uh, Main Street in that?
Oh, that's July 9.
July 9?
Yep, July 9.
And I was just wondering about that St. James and the drawling, have they found out anything?
That will be, that project has to be done by May 14, so we should know relatively soon. Right now, where that's at, these are actually the questions. But it's actually having a peer review done, so the model is done, they've got it all figured out. What they do is they take the model and give it to another company that does the same thing, and the peer review process is being done, and they kind of take a look at it to make sure they agree with everything, and once they sign up on it, then they give it to the DNR.
This is, yeah, the DNR is part of their, their state grant.
This is the LCCMR, so this is not the state two and a half million, this is the LCCMR that we have had, kind of the fiscal agents for.
Yeah.
That started before I got here. So it has to be done in two, in two weeks, so, should know soon.
We'll have to add a new item to the agenda, having, so this is Segler's commentary. All right, good. Any other business, under other business? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Counselor Hess, supported by Counselor Godey, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stay on the jury then until May 21.
Yes, sir.